It's 6:00 PM. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Mayor Yumika Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. This is on Tuesday, September 10, 2024, our regular city council meeting. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city of Lake City, of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. I ask everyone to please silence or turn off their phone at this moment. And I ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence in remembrance of tomorrow will be the anniversary of 9/11. And we also going to ask Councilwoman Scott to lead us in prayer thereafter in a pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilwoman Crosby. Thank you.
Amen. This evening, dear God, we come with Thanksgiving in our heart, with love and praise. We come to celebrate the life that we all live. We pray to heaven and father that you are blessed, the council member, our mayor, all the citizen of this city. We pray to heaven and father that we've been able to come to agreement and be with one another. We may always, always have to agree, but let's be together. We pray to heaven and father, continue to bless us. Bless the schools in all situation. Bless the children, the teachers, everyone that may involved with citizen, with our children. Blessed in your name we pray. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members?
Yes, Mayor Yumika Robinson.
Present.
Mayor pro tem Nicole Singletary.
Present.
Councilmember Willamina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember William Askin.
Present.
Councilmember Delannica Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby.
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brown.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I find her to be a farm.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Approval of the minutes from the mayor and council meeting, August 13, 2024.
Question to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Next, we will go to our newest addition on our agenda, and that is a platform for our young people, addressing the mayor and council. And tonight, we have students from Lake City Panther Academy. And all students, come forward. Good afternoon. Gotta speak loudly and introduce yourselves.
My name is Harris Washington. I'm from Lake City, South Carolina. Oh, I'm from Lake City High School Panther Academy. And I think we should bring fun spots into Lake City, South Carolina, because we have kids that think gun violence and violence are on our front. So I think if we bring fun spots that we might income and put on kids will feel that lately, because you have parents that drive forty, thirty minutes to an hour to go to fun spots like fun homes and stuff like that.
Okay.
My name is Joanna Smith, and I'm from Lake City High School Panther Academy. And I think we need more jobs for like fourteen and up, so we could have more ways to be, hit, bring income, because not a lot of people have what most people have. And we can't really get jobs till sixteen and up. And I feel like that could also help Lake City, because then they can get an income and start using that instead of the gay violence, like the school shootings and the reason we had school today.
Thank you, thank you. Can we have the representatives stand up as well from Panther Academy that are here with the students? Ms. Lenora Caldwell and Mr. Jerry State.
And Ms. Melva.
And Ms. Melva.
Also fair.
Yes.
When they first got to know about you, they read it in the community paper. Also, there was another article printed in the paper about you. And they have some that they're passing out today, and they have a copy for you also.
Thank you, thank you. I want to say that these young ladies, they invited me to their classroom a few weeks ago. Thank you. And they really inspired me on everything that they had to say. They asked me. And then we have Dr. Hickson walking in, who is the superintendent of Florence School District III, supporting our children. They really inspired me by everything they had to, they wanted me to know. And I had to start this platform for our students to be able to understand that they have a voice of their own, and we're wanting to hear their voice. When they asked me the question, what are my goals and visions for Lake City? I told them that it's more important to know their visions and goals, because those are my visions and goals, what they wanted to see. And they had a lot to say that day. They actually wrote me letters of encouragement, and I really appreciate that. And I actually have letters that I wrote back to you to let you know, and if I have a moment to read it. It says, Dear Panther Academy students, I am so proud of each of you for speaking up and making your voices heard. Your courage, ideas, and passion are exactly what our community needs. You are powerful, and your perspectives matter. Keep using your voice. It's a force for change and inspiration. Remember, your words have the power to shape the future, and we all here to support you. Believe in yourself, stay bold, and never stop speaking up. You are making a difference. You have the full support of your community and leaders, including myself. We believe in you, and most importantly, remember to believe in yourself. I am eager to see the incredible things you will achieve. Keep using your voice in a positive way. It is one of the most powerful tools you have. Using your voice for positive change challenges the norms, inspires others, and reminds us all of the power of determination. You are the future leaders, innovators, and changemakers of our community. And remember, your voice matters. Sincerely, your mayor, Yumika Robinson. And she was one of the most outspoken ones. Thank you again. Next, we have presentations. Our first presentation will be Ms. Lynn Wilson, Director of Community and Workforce Development, Florence County Economic Development Partnership. Therefore, followers will be Ms. Joey Reynolds from Duke Energy. Presentation. Presentation Stakeholder Engagement Manager with Duke Energy. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, mayor and council, for inviting me to come back. I came last month, and the clock got me. So I have a few more things I'd like to share with you. One of the main reasons I wanted to come out as the Director of Community and Workforce Development, a lot of people don't realize that economic development has a developing communities commission. And this commission is appointees by Florence County Council, and they are to connect more with Florence County Economic Development and serve as eyes and ears out in our local communities. So I encourage you all to reach out. You actually have two developing community commission appointees. In Lake City, we have Brenda Montgomery and Randy Driggers. So I encourage you to reach out to them as an arm, extended arm of economic development and county council. And then also, reach out to me in our office anytime for any economic development questions or needs, if we can talk you in any way. This commission meets together quarterly, and the current focus is on small business resources. So when we get together, we share information like the Francis Marion Small Business Incubator and incubator here, of course, in Lake City. And they can help, there's information given to them for startups and for existing small business resources. So there's a lot of resources out there, and we're just trying to share some information. And I just want to encourage you all to communicate with your appointees as much as you can. Also, economic development, our office rolled out our strategic plan at the end of August. And if you would like a copy of that, I'll be glad to email it to anybody on the council, as well as in the audience. I'll wait afterwards, and you can give me your contact information. But it's just a plan to help us create success for the next ten years, like we have in the past ten years. And then lastly, I have a strategic, I mean, industrial park update. We have industrial parks that are strategically located in the county. And there's one that we have been working on right there in Scranton. So we've completed a road in Scranton. I encourage you all to go by and look. This is the product that we actually try to recruit businesses and industry in our area. So their road has been completed, and then also CNT Electric is under construction with their substation. And so if you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out. And then lastly, I have brought flyers with me. I always bring flyers. And this one is on AESC, their first mega hiring event, which will be in Florence at the SIMT. Original date was October 3, but they have pushed it back to November 13. I've left some flyers on the table behind me. But this is where they are hiring for both hourly and salary positions over the coming months, as they continue to expand and build their facility here in Florence County. And if you click on the QR code, you can actually fill out an application, and they are screening people for interviews on that day as well. But if you don't do that, you're still welcome to come and walk into the hiring event at the SIMT on Wednesday, November 13. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Next, we have Ms. Reynolds from Duke Energy.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I'm Joey Reynolds. I'm a Senior Stakeholder Engagement Manager for Duke Energy, which is a whole lot of words to say, that I'm in community engagement for all of our grid improvement projects in this community and communities around the PD. So thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to present to you tonight. I really just wanted to come and share the good news of some areas that we've identified for grid improvement in Lake City. We're going to be doing these upgrades in phases. So tonight, I'd just like to share some information around one of those phases, which begins at Beauregard Street and ends at Deep River Street, right there along South Ron McNair Boulevard, where most can recognize the Napa Auto Parts. We have a three-phase line across the road from Napa that we have decided to bring to the other side of the road and place underground. That area tends to see some accidents and sometimes cars hit poles at that spot, and that's considered the backbone of the circuit that feeds your city. So as a way to kind of improve reliability and improve the grid, we're going to place those lines underground. And we will be doing some pole upgrades and line upgrades around Beauregard, Cash Avenue, Deep River Street, and Ripple. But essentially, we're going to create a barrier, so that if power is lost in that area, it will not knock out the whole circuit, only knock out a small number of customers right there on Ron McNair, and everyone will continue to have power. So I do have some maps that I can share with council after the meeting. Unfortunately, due to cybersecurity these days, we're not allowed to give those to you any longer, because they've got some information on them that, you know, could put us at risk. But you will see, and you may have already seen, some big trucks and construction equipment out by Napa. You will see some lane closures on the northbound lane of Ron McNair. But that is a moving lane closure, so as they move down the road, they'll adjust. The whole lane will not be closed all at once. Folks in your community should have seen a flyer that we passed out, of anybody who may be impacted by those lane closures. And you'll see that for about another four months, but we will keep moving down the road. And as we get to our second phase, which will be down at Nanyal, to tie all this together, I'd love to come back and present that to you as well. And so just be on the lookout for our trucks. They're digging, they're boring, they're putting stuff underground, right there at the fire station, South Lynch's Fire Station, and the EMS building, without damaging any of their beautiful driveway that was laid not too long ago. So, and I would just end by saying, I went a lot faster than I thought. I am so inspired by the platform for our young and the vibrant group of folks that are here in this council meeting. It's just really inspiring to see so many people here and engaged, and I'm excited for your community. Thank you.
Joey, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you give a description or a visual of what the grid looks like? Look like for the ones, those who don't know what it looks like?
Sure. So the grid, when I speak about the grid, I'm speaking to the power line poles. A lot of people call them telephone poles that you see running down Ron McNair and through your neighborhoods. There are the smaller poles with the smaller wire that's above ground. So what we're doing is taking some of that and just putting it underground to protect it from accidents and cars hitting the poles and things like that. And that grid is like a finger system that just goes and feeds all the neighborhoods and small businesses in your community.
It also help whenever we have bad weather, right?
Absolutely. And so the piece on the other side of the room that still feeds some of those industrial folks, we're going to put fuses on the end, so that way only two or three people might lose power if something happens on that side, and it'll continue to feed everybody else.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I live on Beauregard Street, and we was wondering what was going on there across from Napa.
So you will see poles upgraded, a bunch of nice stuff on Beauregard as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Next, we have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council.
Good evening. Business is needed for the city to grow. But what do the sale of beer, wine, lottery tickets, a hangout place such as Saveway does for a community who have issues like the Ray Street have and had? The business owner do not live in Lake City, and in an email sent to me, he referred to the neighborhood as a hood. Paid officers, you should know that a written report is needed when responding to an accident or incident, especially one involving pedestrians. The community is still waiting as to why that was not done. We need answers. And there's a vicious rumor going around. I'm praying it's not true. It said the chief of police, who does not live in the city limit, is not able to come out for any incident after a certain time, no matter what the issue or problem. If that's true, why? When the lawyer who is hired to attend the council meeting is asked for legal advice, he remains seated and cannot be heard on the Facebook Live. All standing and speaking to him might, just as I do when I address this body, why not him?
Can.
And when you.
May I say, Ms. Maddie, that we do not do any personal, personal attacks.
When you raise taxes on homeowners who average age of sixty-five, who live off social security, sometime work for part-time jobs to keep their, pay their bills and keep their head above water, a pay increase for anybody at any time now should not be done. In other words, we raise taxes to give raises? I'm asking council to vote for no of this. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. If none, we're going to move forward with our agenda, and we're going into legislative. Anyone wants to stay, or if not, this is the time to dismiss. But you can stay if you like. Thank you. Okay. Oh.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you again. Ms. Hall.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank y'all for coming again.
Good evening, mayor and council, for your consideration during the legislative part. Ordinance number 2024.008, first reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the compensation of benefits of the office of the mayor for the city of Lake City and compensation of benefits for the council members and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.008 for first reading?
Question to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council?
Yes, I have a couple of questions on this. I know a while back, before my term, we were supposed to come back and discuss the position of full-time and part-time. But instead, we coming up here, and we want to give ourselves, well, give a raise. I don't feel that council was addressed it properly, give the privilege of their duties to uphold the other ordinance that was, that the city was going by. And now we coming here for a raise. And Mr. Williams, if you wouldn't mind, if you don't mind, would you tell me the salary of the, of that position now for mayor?
The salary, current salary line is at forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand?
Correct.
Okay. What the forty-five at?
Well, it was a typo. We have now corrected it in the system.
Okay, it's typo. Okay.
Do I have the updated?
It's on their computer updated.
It's on your computer updated.
Okay, I have a comment to make. For as long as I've served on council, in many, many, many years, and the very first time I received a raise was, what, three, two years ago? And I cannot see in good conscience, the millage rates just went up. When you get your tax bills, you're going to see an increase. You're going to feel the brunt of it. Water. And I cannot in good conscience that, as I said, see that we would give a twenty-five thousand dollar raise to the mayor or a hundred dollar raise to each council member. Just a big disparage there. I don't agree with that, and I think we're taxing the low-income people more than we should. And we are here to represent our constituents. That's what we are to do. That's what I'm to do. I cannot see raising, even by, why would I raise my own taxes? Doesn't make any sense. And I realize the city has to move forward, but look at the people behind this moving forward. I don't think it's fair, and it's not equitable to the community for anyone getting a raise. As a matter of fact, many people have called me about this and have suggested that we decrease, we go to a part-time mayor with the salary cap of twenty-seven thousand five hundred, and no increase for any council member. And if anyone. We need to throw caution to the wind. We are stripping elderly people. That's not right. You have family members who are low-income, no income. You have homeowners who are having to take the brunt of these high taxes. And you all need to throw caution to the wind and make a decision that you will have to live with later.
I could, well, Ms. Murphy just said, I'm here for the people. When I come into office, I'm going to do their welfare justice by them. We went up on the water rates, we went up on taxes. Money is not an issue for me, so, and I didn't let it be known, but I'm going to do right by the citizens. by the citizens of Lake City. And I don't think it's right for us to raise these taxes and feel like we were, we, they taking the blood trauma of all this, and I don't think it's right. Because at the end, in two more years, three more years, we're going to come right back to the drawing table and we're going to say, well, we're going to have to raise the taxes just to cover this $200,000, $2,000 that going to take up right here with insurance and all that and stuff. It may be funny to some people, but you got people at home suffering and I don't think it's a laughing matter, so I'm going to just leave it as that.
Well, one thing we're not talking about is how the sale got over $10 million in grant over the past two years, which is more we got in the past 10 years combined. So if you're talking about paying for buck, I mean, we should actually raise the salary a little bit more.
That grant got to go in them pipes and everything. It can't go back...
That's a reason for the grants.
Give the specialized taxpayers what they want to pay.
Well, taxpayers are paying for it. Right, grant monies too. So if taxpayers are paying for it, why raise salaries? I mean, as much as I would love to have a raise, I would love it. I'd leave, but $100 a month ain't going to do me no good. And $25,000 for the mayor, I don't know. People who, like I said, homeowners know better. And people who are not homeowners, you don't understand what it's like to make a decision to affect and impact somebody's life in a negative way. And I really don't see the need for a, I'd like to make a motion to go to a part-time mayor with a 27.5 cap. Do I get a motion? I made the motion.
This motion, this motion is still on the floor.
That motion will take precedence there. So you need a second on that and a vote, but this is an ordinance, so it's not like it would be effective today.
I'll take it.
It doesn't go into effect until January. So what's today is done. So we get a second?
It would still have to do two readings. If, if, if I can say something...
Let me rephrase. And I'll stand up and I'll get on the video. That motion will take precedence, but you need a second and you need a vote.
We have a second.
There we go.
I second it.
Okay, there you go. So now that would take precedent.
Question or discussion?
I don't have much of a discussion. I just have a statement and I can say exactly what Jason and Ms. Cassandra said as well is that we voted on not to increase the millage for the sake of the citizens of Lake City. And I too can say that I would give, if you, if they passed it, you can have it, the citizens can have it because it's not right. And at the end of the day, when people voted for me for district four, they voted for me to have their best interest at heart. And so that's what I think that might, because right now I probably could afford it, but my neighbors might not, couldn't afford it, somebody down the street might not, couldn't afford it. So therefore, it's a no for me.
Okay, I got a first and I got a second.
So we have a motion on the floor and then we need a vote?
So that's killing this, like what, what's?
Charlie, how is that, we're voting on the motion before we go to the ordinance? Stand up.
If there's a, if there...
If there's a motion and a second, then there's a vote on that motion.
That motion, before we move to the ordinance.
You got the motion and the second?
I'm trying to understand.
If I'm not mistaken, the motion on the floor is to make no raise for council and a part-time mayor at a cap of 27.5. Is that what is on the floor at this moment? Correct, Charlie?
I thought the motion was a part-time and a 27.5 cap.
A cap at 27.5.
Right, but so that's voted on first and then you go to the...
The original ordinance.
The written ordinance.
So that would be the pay period, not in addition to the 40.
That's after, first we got a...
You got a motion?
Well, I got a motion, maybe I can...
She's second.
And the motion is part-time mayor, 27.5.
And no other raises?
No increase to council. Now we need a vote.
A vote.
Does that include the $40,000, current 40,000?
Yeah, well, that wouldn't be, when you go to part-time, you said 27.5, part-time mayor.
And all the other benefits included, vehicle, insurance.
This is just the monetary part, correct?
Yeah. So we have to take a vote on Councilmember Cosby's motion.
And then we go back to this one if it does not go. She made the motion and she seconded, so now we need to vote.
No, I understand that, but... Okay, so we decreasing from the 40 to just make 27.5, correct?
And part-time.
And part-time.
But we could just...
Who makes, who makes part-time, who makes $40,000?
It says... Did you already read the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
With your signature on it, so go ahead and do the vote.
Oh, no, I remember from, I'm sorry, y'all, but I remember from the previous meeting back, what it was, 20?
22.
2022, when we were supposed to come back.
Yeah, two years once.
Right, correct. So basically what Councilmember Brown said, we were supposed to come back and vote for the full-time, part-time mayor.
Discussing.
Correct.
But that didn't happen.
Correct.
That's, that's this right now, two years.
Two years from now.
But in this ordinance, it says, in the ordinance we got right now, it doesn't say anything about full-time or part-time. What we going by is what was, what we going by is what been done in 2020, of October 11th, like 2020.
So what?
So that would be two years from now. Based on this to now, without the discussion of full-time or part-time.
Charlie, we did have a discussion approximately two years ago, and if I'm not mistaken, it was October 2022.
October 2022.
Yes, and I don't think...
It was 2022.
Right, and I think you were serving as mayor pro temp because Mayor Anderson was not here.
Because I did that meet.
A part-time, full-time discussion was on the mayor and they originally said, we'll leave it at full-time for the next two years and we'll bring it back up for discussion at that point. So as opposed to bringing it back up for discussion for part-time, full-time, and knowing that we have to have this done before January or for two readings before we hit the election and hit January, we then came back and it was proposed to do the increase for mayor and council and make it a full-time position. So they wrapped it all up in one package.
That's right.
But no increase for council. No increase for council. That the $100 a month increase for council.
Hello, hello, hello.
Okay. My thing is, I see the city is moving forward and we are much more busy than we were two years ago. I can't see decreasing the mayor, make no difference who the mayor is, not to decrease to 27. I disagree with 27,000.
I don't think it matters who the mayor is. I think that you looking at the different municipalities and you got Florence with a part-time mayor. Florence is probably three, seven hours.
Four times.
But Florence is a weak mayor.
Right.
It's a strong council administrator, so you have a different form of government.
There's a different form of government. I mean, mm-mm.
It's all, like I said before, it's all about the voters. It's all about what you're doing for the citizens, the calculation of things and how things is rolling. My thing is, is the respect of it all.
If, if I can say, if I can say real briefly, because we're taking too much time on this ordinance, if I may say briefly, that I am in the mayor position at this moment. And I was elected to be mayor. And in my opinion, I have been doing that job to the fullest, to the best of my ability. And I wouldn't, if anybody knows me, I wouldn't dare try to make anything detrimental to our community. I have been working and my work speaks for me. I have been going out and I have been advocating for our community. I've been representing the city of Lake City anyplace I go. I don't put myself on these committees and boards that I have been appointed to and elected to. So obviously, not just within the city of Lake City, but outside, within the state and nationally, they're seeing that I'm doing something as being in my position. And it's not a personal thing. It's, it's I represent the city of Lake City. And all I ask for in putting, is coming back in two years and asking and requesting this, I'm asking to equip your mayor to continue to do what she is doing for the city of Lake City. I'm not begging for anything whatsoever and I will not do anything to harm our community in any way. My sole provider is God and any way that this goes, he will continue to provide for me. But I'm not begging, I'm just requesting to, to help equip your mayor to continue to do as she has been representing your city. And for the past two years, yes, we've had a lot and I'm, a lot of people have told me, they not only seen the difference in the change, they have felt the difference in the change in the city of Lake City. And that is the work not just of one person, because I would not dare take the credit, has been the teamwork of the city of Lake City staff, of every department. So we are diligently working all the time for the city of Lake City. So I wouldn't dare do anything to, to make anything detrimental to the city of Lake City, the citizens at all. I live within this community. I grew up in the city of Lake City and this is my hometown. So I want to continue to see it move forward. And that's what I plan to do either way.
Okay. You finished?
I am.
Councilmember, we are in singularly member districts, as you know. That means that we can represent the entire city also, we're not confined to the district we represent or live in. We encapsulate the entire city because I've gone Walmart places in Florence and I've run into people from other persuasions here in Lake City commenting about different things in Lake City. They're calling me and asking, look, we need to have this done, that done, okay? If it's within my power, I make a call, try to ensure it. So we, we, I mean, we don't just serve one set of people over here and leave the others over here by themselves. We are all here working in the best interest of the entire city. And I'm not going to sit here and give myself credit that I do not deserve, but at the same time, I think what I do speaks for me also. And, and I want you all to hold me accountable for anything.
And like I once, and like I once was told, you know what you was getting into whenever you ran for your seat. And one thing I can say, I can always give a fish credit for swimming. It's a part of the job and when you fill in for the job, do the job at your best of ability, but don't pry on backs of other people. I just can't see that and I'm done with it.
I have a motion and I have a second. I need a vote.
To bring it back to the point, we, we have a motion on the table to change the mayor's position to a part-time mayor at a cap of $27,500 annual salary with all the other benefits that's afforded to her at this moment, or afforded to her position at this moment. So that's what's on the table for a vote at this moment. Mayor?
All in favor, show of hands of that motion? That motion passes?
That motion passes and will then be, but it's just an ordinance. I mean, it is an ordinance, so it'll have to come up.
The first reading, the first reading passes.
So do we rewrite this ordinance?
Yeah, no.
Or do we make a new ordinance?
So that ordinance will be...
It will include what was said today.
Yeah, I mean, that, that will be, what will be on the agenda for next month.
My question is, this ordinance that we have here that came to the floor tonight, is it dead?
Yes.
So she needs to assign a new number to a new ordinance?
You can, you can vote however you need to on second reading.
No, 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 no. It's in stone.
I just need some clarification. I have the motion as passed.
Yep.
New ordinance will be changed, oh, eight will go away.
Correct.
Will bring on of 11, which is the next ordinance to be rewritten as Councilmember Cosby's motion was made.
And that'll be the second reading.
And that'll be the second reading.
That's right.
Even though we're changing the number.
Does the, the new ordinance need to reflect back to the original?
I'll, yeah, I'll look at it.
I think it does. It needs to reflect, yeah. Mayor and council, with your permission, I will move on to ordinance number 2024.009, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, authoring the city of Lake City Police Department to enter into a law enforcement assistance and support agreement with the King Street Police Department in all matters related thereto. Basically, this is a mutual aid agreement that we have with our neighboring communities.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.009 for first reading?
Second.
So moved. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
I'm motioning, then, Jason, second.
Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and council, resolution number 2024.040, final reading, a resolution that Ms. Mike, Michelle Daniels be reappointed to serve on the Board of Zoning and Appeals Committee. Her term will expire on November 1st, 2024. Ms. Daniels expressed through email of wanting to continue her service on the Board of Zoning Appeals through November 1st, 2028.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.040 for final reading?
Second.
Move to approve.
Jason, wait. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
I have a question. Do the board appointees, do they go through a training?
Yes. Through the municipal association, just like council members go through training, they have training for boarding commissions.
And the only reason I'm not making any comments about this analogy because I already know Michelle. But now in the past, when you brought people to us, as I always said, we don't know these people, we don't get a chance to interview them, but yet you want us to appoint them. That's putting the heart before the course, as Jason likes to say. And so I would hope in the future that we can, that more respect is shown, that we can get a chance to interview these people and get a chance to meet them before appointing them. If you had a business, you would not hire someone if you didn't interview that person. You interviewed them because you want to see what they have to bring to the table. And I feel comfortable in just about any area of interviewing. So, because I can look at what the job description is and then just take my interviewing from that. So I, we, I'd appreciate if we get more respect is shown and that we're given the opportunities to meet these people.
I think we had a discussion about having a representative from the council and that representative is the mayor that is part of council that is in these interviews, because we can't have all council members in the interviews or a quorum.
I thought we said we could choose one person, but then we said, I'm interfering with people's jobs, so.
Right. But you do have a representative from the council.
Well, I like, you know, if I, if you're going to interview someone, I'm flexible. I can be made flexible.
Any other comments? Any other comments? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number 2024.041, final reading. A resolution of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking approval relating to the recovery and collection cost as a part of the delinquent debt collected pursuant to the Set Off Debt Collection Act and all matters related thereto for the utility billing department. For your res, for your consideration.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.041 for final reading?
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Yes, um well, we pursue the collection debt, who will that be sent out to? I mean, how will we go about that procedure? It's the first time.
It's, it's an agreement that we have with the municipal association. Um we follow their policies and procedures. Uh right now, we're set at $95,959 write-off that we've sent to the municipal association, and we have now sent collection letters out to the individuals who have not paid their bill, and they're in a write-off status, and we're, they've been in a write-off status for more than 90 days.
So that'll go on their taxes like?
Their state taxes, correct.
Do they state taxes, we get reimbursed that?
That's right. Minus their fee. Uh I will say, in regards, we're at $95,959 this year. Last year, we were at $110,000. The prior year, we were anywhere from $300,000 to $450,000. So they have done their their work and been very diligent about keeping these numbers low and doing the process of collecting before we get to this stage.
Okay, I know this is annual, but how far back are we going? From the beginning of the fiscal year or the calendar year?
The fiscal, we go our fiscal year. So on June 30th, we created the file.
Okay.
And we started that process and recorded it in the system and and getting ready to move forward to do collection.
What you're recording, recording now is from June 23?
July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Because we're now in the 25 year.
Any other questions?
I will throw out that with the letters that we have already sent out, we have already started collecting money in-house. So that means they'll go into the system and delete these people off of the record so they won't take their taxes.
You know about how much we got, or could you give us a copy of that?
About, like, I can't get those, those are just blended in with the day-to-day work, but I'm hearing it's uh close to $5,000, $6,000 in the water department.
Okay, are the delinquent people notified that if that debt is not paid?
By letter.
That by, okay.
Correct.
I mean, when it's not paid, then it goes towards their?
Collection off their taxes. State of South Carolina taxes, and they get a letter stating that, and it's a form letter that is developed with the municipal association.
So they are made aware of it?
They are made aware of it. And they start sending those letters out um in September, and they'll do another set, I think, in the end of October. There is, there is a hearing process. If they agree with, if they disagree with what's been reported, there's nothing we can do with the taxes, it's on hold, and they can request a, a hearing.
Yeah, because a lot of people are complaining about these high water rates. Um lady called in yesterday and said that um she hasn't been home all month, and that everything in her house, including water, was turned off, but she received a bill for $139, I think it was. And she's very livid about it, because, you know, you're always going to get, well, you need to get a plumber. So she said, well, if I have to pay a plumber, then I'm still digging the hole deeper for myself, and I don't want to have to do that.
If they calling and and make accusation, or make a recommendation that they have a problem with their water bill, we do send the staff out to do an evaluation of their meter, to see if they can determine if that, if there is a leak, there is a way for them to test the system to see if there is a leak.
If anyone is, if, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Hall.
And if they find that it is on our side, we will address it accordingly, but if they find that it's on their side, they will give them a list of plumbers and let them know that, you know, we have detected it's in your system.
Okay, if I might, um I received a letter from HomeServe, it has the top, Home Serve, Duke Energy, and City of Lake City. I left it, but I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow. I had two of them to come in the mail this week, they're asking for you to pay an additional monthly fee for your um.
Insurance on your water line from your meter to your house.
No, from a meter to the street. If I read it correctly, did I read it correctly?
We have nothing to do with that program. That is an independent business like, like life insurance, like a car, or car insurance for maintenance. We have nothing to do with them. We don't promote them or advocate for them.
Okay, because it's conflicting to me, um and the reason it's conflicting is that it has.
Our name on it.
Home Serve in red, and red stamp, Duke, then City of Lake City at the top.
Because we furnish the water.
Yeah.
But we have nothing to do with it. We don't advocate or promote, or we don't even tell the customer they exist.
So that's Duke Energy and Home Serve doing that together?
Duke Energy is probably on there, just like the City of Lake City's name is on there.
Yeah, I'm telling you, those three names are on there.
I know, but we didn't ask to have our name put on there.
Home Serve might be using Duke Energy and City of Lake City.
Didn't give their name, their permission to have their name put on it either.
Okay, well, we need to have, figure out a way to let the community know that, you know, unless they need this, because the city does cover from the meter to the street.
Right, yes, ma'am.
And so this is double dipping to me. So we need to come up with a way to let the community know that this is not, to ignore this, don't pay that extra $1.95.
We'll see if we can find a copy of the letter, and we will do a broadcast out on Facebook and 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 put notifications out that we are not promoting this and have nothing to do with it.
They're pushing hard, because I got two letters in the same day.
Can we go ahead and get a vote on this? Resolution 2024.041 for final reading, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
If you can, we can run a report of the system, and see if it's 0s, if it shows 10 yells, 30 yells, 40 yells, so we can see if they have any. Give you the name, we can run a report.
Okay, I'll have them getting.
Yeah, and I, and I do want to state that if anyone has any issues about their water bill, they can always come and bring their water bill to city administration building, and we will sit down with you and go through your water bill. We, Ms. Nakisha Izard or anyone in the department will break it down. We have no problem sitting down with you and talking over your water bill, because we want to find out if there's a problem, how we can both get a solution to it. We don't want anyone to have high water bills. If there's a problem, we want to get down to the problem and help you with it. So please remember that, and please tell your neighbors, your family, and your friends.
Well, I know this person, because they've been here before, many times.
All right, good. Uh Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number 2024.042, final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking approval relating to the recovery of collection costs in part delinquent debt collected pursuant to the Set Off Debt Collection Act and all matters related thereto for the judicial department.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.042 for final reading? Move to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Need a motion first, and, okay, she motioned and he seconded. Any questions, council? If not?
If I may share, the number reported in your, in, on your sheets will be reduced by $5,000 automatically, because based on the letters that's already been mailed out, uh people have come in and paid that debt of up to $5,000.
And opposed to follow.
Right here at the judicial department.
So we already got $5,000?
We've already got $5,000 of that bill uh in hand, without even doing anything but mailing out a letter.
Okay. All in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, uh a resolution seeking approval of Ms. Karen Williams' Corsi appointment to the Housing Board Authority in all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.043 for final reading? Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
I got a quick question about the approval of, to that housing authority. How do we go about doing that matter? How do we go about choosing these people, or these people putting in the application, or how do we go about?
She did, we, this one is replacing someone who's re, who's asking to resign from the board, and she submitted her application. I'm not sure if someone on the housing board approached her, but Mayor and council are the ones that seat that board, and she came up with that on an application and went through an interview process.
Do we run that, do we run an ad in the?
It was ran.
On paper or anything?
It was ran.
It was ran, okay.
It's ran like all the other applications are.
Okay.
So everybody, you know.
It's run on the city page?
City, city website, city um Facebook page, yes.
Well, uh, is Ms. Carson?
She is, Ms. Curse, Carson, Cursey, sorry.
Okay.
No, I just want to see who you are. Hey, girl, how you doing? Okay, um I've seen her before, so I'm going to vote for you, but I don't like the procedure, procedurally, how it's done. You have nothing to do with that, but I heard some really good things about you, and for that, I'm going to vote for you. But in the future, I wish I would get a chance to interview these applicants also, before they are listed on the, on the agenda. Thank you.
At least it not toppled everybody, so.
That was already in the discussion already. Any other comments? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, uh the financials for the period ending August 31st, 2024. Uh in the general fund, we have revenue of 589. We have expenses of 1.6. We've overspent the revenue for that period of 1,400. I'll remind you that our taxes are collected, and the rear, we're still waiting on July and August taxes to come in. For the water department, we're at 207 for revenue, and the, the expenses are at 264, 56,000 overspent. And the sewer, we're at 342, 8, expenses of 1, 496, 8, overspent by 153, 935, but we've also done some major repairs to sewer line breaks. In the stormwater, we have year-to-date, 17,921 dollars. We've recognized expenses of 8,333, a, a revenue of 9,588 over the expenses. On the reserves, for the water reserve, we have, we've put 6,145 in the account, we're sitting at 86,000. In the sewer, we put 6,011 in the account, we're sitting at 84,000. That is the expenses for August 2024. Mayor and council, for your consideration, the bills 1 through 5, for your approval? Yes, ma'am.
I need to, about the bills, or?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
Is it about the bills?
Just a quick question. My question is, whenever, like, you have events like a, how, where's that funding coming from?
That's paid off the general fund, and then the revenue that we get, we put back on it.
Okay. Well, because that's, is, is that type of stuff, is, is not on here?
It's, it's in your general fund category.
General fund.
Yes.
But it doesn't have, it's not, like, itemized?
It's not, no, it doesn't list itemized.
Well, then if you get a chance, if you get to itemize, um the, the money that was put out for, and then the income?
We have that, I'll, I'll send that out in the morning.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Need a motion to approve bills, items 1 through 5, for September 10th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions about the bills? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
All right, Mayor and council, before I bring Patrick up.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All in favor? Any opposed? There you go.
Um Mayor and council, before I bring Chief Miles up to do a report for the police department, I would like to recognize, I don't think Brandon's here. Brandon is on his way to Columbia for his government finance officer's class, so he can get his certification in government finance officer, but I want to recognize Brandon Carter. Uh he was informed on Friday uh that he put his name in the pot to be the president-elect for the Government Finance Officers Association of South Carolina, and at the October conference, he will be named the um.
President.
President-elect of the Government Finance Officers of South Carolina. Patrick?
Congrats to Brandon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Just quickly, I'll go over the stats for the month, the month of August 2024 for the police department. Total calls for the month of August is 1,714 calls per service. Uh some of the bigger numbers that you have on the sheets in front of you will be traffic stops, 389 traffic stops for that month, 716 property checks. Total citations out of all those stops is 160, with 141 incident reports completed for those 1,700 calls per service. Uh 18 arrests with warrants, with 48 arrest warrants issued and 23 arrest warrants served. And that is some of the major numbers, but to get a little further deeper into it, some of the traffic citations that are being issued, or that were issued for that month, were vehicle violations at 23, uh simple possessions of marijuana at 6, they wrote 58 speeding tickets, seven operating uninsured, 20 driver license violations, 14 driving learner suspensions, and one DUI for that month. And uh also, I know that two, that we had two severe accidents for the month of August. One was on Church Street, and one was on 52. Uh the lady on Church Street, she was severely injured from that motor vehicle accident, and the lady on 52 actually lost her life in that accident, so. Our hearts go out to the families on those. We backed up the sheriff's office, or we responded along with the sheriff's office to assist them on two incidences outside of the city, one being on Rodman Road, just outside of Lake City, and the other one being in Olanda. The incident from Olanda ended up spilling over into the city. Now, that's not necessarily the month of August, but it's, it's close enough, and it's an issue that didn't come up, so if you get asked about it. Two most recent incidents that spilled over from the incident that sheriff's office worked in Olanda, ended up taking place in the housing authority on Oak Street, which was one of them, I believe Roman Corp was the other one. The most recent thing that we've worked has been the threats to the schools. The first threat that you saw, the hit the news media, was for Lake City, Florida, that actually wasn't for Lake City, um, South Carolina, but we responded to it appropriately. We added additional officers to the schools that we worked, and it was investigated, and it turned out that that individual was arrested in Florida. The most recent one came in after that one, and it, it was a kind of a response to, you can tell that by, I'm sure everybody's seen the post by now, and then there's an additional one that is currently being investigated.
So pretty much the kid from out of town that just follow up with something that got itself in trouble, pretty much.
Yep. And it, and it happens like this, and I'd like to implore all the young people that's, that's watching this and listening to it, you need to be careful with what you say on social media. Those threats will renew up on a watch system quick, and that will affect you for years and years to come. So we take it very seriously, the police department, and um for the concerns to my schedule, I wish the individual that spreads those rumors, I wish they'd have been sitting beside me at 2 o'clock this morning when I was working on that, so. That's kind of where I'm at with that. My phone rings constantly. It, it didn't stop until about 2:30 this morning, and started again at about 6:00, so. I get very little sleep those days, but that's to be expected, and you say that's what I signed up for.
That's right. That's what you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Yeah?
Um pertaining to the incident that happened on Church Street, um what is the protocol, if, if you can, to the best of, you know, to what you can say, because it's probably still under investigation, or is it?
It's, portions of it are still under investigation, but I talked with the family today, and I can't release any of it, because it's a, it's a, you know, the public wants to know these things, because certain people are well-known in the public. But my take on this is.
And it's not bad, I just think that. Yeah, and then also, I think it's because people want to know, in case it happens to their family members, like, what's the protocol for the police department? If this happens to their family member, do you guys, as far as like, if somebody gets hit like she did, and um at what liberty? hit like she did, and, um, at what liberty, or is it just up to the police officer to say, hey, I think that they may be drinking, so I'm gonna do a sobriety test, or is it like, what, what is the city's policy on that?
That particular incident, I can tell you that we had one DRE officer, that is the drug recognition expert, he's specifically trained. There's over 100,000 law enforcement officers in the state. A few hundred of them are DREs, and we employed one of them. He evaluated her. We had a, a DUI instructor that we also employed, who's a separate officer. He evaluated her, and two Class 1 patrol officers evaluated the driver of the car. Neither one of them picked up on any signs of the intoxication, any, any signs that would show that she was impaired. So that's four separate individuals, four separate police officers.
And it's just by their discretion, what they pick up?
At, at four separate moments in time that she was, she was evaluated, but, yeah, and yeah, it, they base it off of their training experience.
Okay, and then also, say for instance, um, I know this, this is an incident that actually happened to me, does, um, are the officers trained to do fingerprints, or anything like that that makes it?
They receive some initial training at the academy during their initial certification, if they choose to, that's one of the, when I went through the academy, it was considered kind of an elective type thing, you could do civil process for the latent prints. Um, I went through latent print, so it is a, it is an option, but there is an advanced portion that we send them to.
Is it only if they want to, or is it, is it mandatory?
It depends on how they move up. Once you get to a supervisor's level, a shift supervisor's level, there's certain requirements that you have to meet to, to take that position.
Okay, and my thing is, and I'm asking you these questions, because I want the citizens to feel that when stuff happens, that our city is going to be, or the citizens are going to be taken care of, or that if somebody breaks in their car, or something like that, it could be, it could have been very well, you know, a criminal that broke into their car, but if you tell me that, hey, well, we don't do fingerprints, this, whatever's in my car is gone, and then there's no tracking of, you know, if somebody just could have done some fingerprints, and then you put it into your system, and it comes up, hey, but, you know, these fingerprints match this person, because it's already in the database. So my thing is, is like, if we are sending police officers to murder beach, to ride a bike, to do patrolling, then I think that it should be like some mandatory stuff, just so even if they have to get up out, out of their bed, just to, you know, make sure that the citizens are safe, or something like a fingerprint or something like that is taken care of, I'm just trying to see how we can better that.
And the way that works is fingerprints on the outside of the car. You have to understand that there's a reasonable expectation of privacy inside of the vehicle, but on the outside of the vehicle, you really don't have an expectation of privacy. So, and I'm gonna use a hypothetical, you park your car in Walmart parking lot, and I'm walking by it, I simply wave my hand, well, your car gets broken into later that night, my prints are on the car. Should I break into your car? So that's, all that has to be excluded and ruled out. So it's not a, it's not a simple process. It's not as simple as the, they make it look on TV. It's a lot more than that. First of all, that person has to be identified, just because the fingerprints there doesn't mean they're, they're in the system. And if they are in the system, we have to rule them out through video, through evidence, through, you know, interviewing, interrogation, all that good stuff. There's a lot that goes into it, so not only that, you have to have at least, I think it's 10 points of comparison to, to put a fingerprint into AFIS, and to get an identification off of it. Glass is one of the best things to get an identification off of, but it can be extremely difficult as well with smudges and stuff like that. I'm not gonna say it's impossible. I was able to pull a fingerprint off of a wet bottle in an armed robbery at Family Dollar a few years ago, and that's what we got an identification off of. And so it can be done on cars. Is it done every time? No, it's not, because for whatever reason, either the officer sees those smudges, and there's just nothing there to lift that would be recognizable in those systems, but sometimes when there is fingerprints, they will take them, and it does take time to get those entered and reviewed and investigated.
So you said that they will take them, so how many people are trained here? I mean, I know that you said everybody goes through like a basic training whenever they're in the academy, so is there anyone here that has any advanced training?
Every investigator has, everybody that is in, in investigations has that specific training for latent fingerprints. There's a select few patrol officers, and we send them to training every day, but, uh, this young man over here is going to a training class tomorrow, um, so there.
Is it specifically for that?
It's not specifically for fingerprints, but he is going to a advanced level class tomorrow, and it's, we have to get them when they're available. They're not always available every day.
Well, I just hope that we can do something so that we can make our citizens just feel more comfortable, you know, that they're gonna be taken care of, and not just kinda like, hey, it's on.
And, and a lot of times, it's gonna be best for an investigator who's specifically trained in certain areas to take those prints, because if you get a patrol officer on shift taking those prints, they're also have, the ones that haven't answered a call on the street. So if your car's broken into, and basically his house is broken into, they're gonna have to choose which one they deal with first. So it's, it's, it's a process, but there are a few of them, I can't give you an exact number, because I would have to go back and look myself, but we do send them to that class. And most of the shift supervisors, that is a recommendation for them as well as, you know, FTO training.
Kind of changing the subject. How many, are we down, any officers?
I think we're down three right now. We've got four that is getting ready to start the criminal justice academy. So we have four new ones that's completed pre-academy, and they will be starting initial phases of criminal justice academy.
And how many do we have total?
39 sworn. I think there's 39 sworn positions.
Thirty-eight, could you do 39?
Thirty-nine, yeah.
Thirty-eight, I'm sorry.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Mayor and council, that's all we have for you this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, city administrator. Um, next we have on our agenda, um, we're wrapping it up with council member and mayor reports, and we will start with council member Askins.
Another report.
Ms. Scott?
Say thank you all for coming. I see we have the housing authority board here, and also the executive here, and, uh, congratulations to, uh, Mrs.
Curcey?
Yeah.
And Ms. Daniels.
And hear the information about do, what they're doing in our community, uh, the light pole and stuff, so the storm coming, I got all the electric power and stuff of that, so thank y'all for being a part of our community, making it better for our citizens. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you all for coming out. Also, thank you for the presentations. Thank you to the two young ladies, um, that came up. Thank you. Um, hopefully, we will see you all next month. Continue to be safe, and my birthday Thursday, just wanted to add that in there.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Early birthday.
Thank you.
Early birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, congratulations to the young folks, the, um, young people who here, you're talking, young lady. You are doing a beautiful job. Congratulations, okay? Keep up the good work. Love to see young people aspiring to drive higher. And, um, congratulations, Ms. Curcey and Michelle, and want to thank everyone for coming out. Um, if anytime you need to contact me, feel free to do so. You, if you don't have my number, um, you know where I live. I don't mind if anybody, and, um, William, but it depends on who it is now, huh? William, um, those retention ponds on Thomas Street and CBS and, um, Dollar General are in, oh, oh, are so overgrown, especially the one about CBS, by Ms. Lynn's house, and, um, in, inside the fence in that one, somebody threw a, 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 a chair or something in there, and it's been there, um, for quite some time.
We'll send them notifications to clean up.
And can you get them a deadline on getting it done?
We have done that.
And to keep it done?
We, we, we do that, but dealing with, where are they at, Rhode Island?
Their, their, um, headquarters.
It took almost a year to get them to buy a new.
A new dumpster, yes. So we definitely stay on top of it.
Well, we need to stay on top of them, because, um, they're on that side of town, it's like anything's just going to the dumps, and looks like, seems like everything that we ask to be done, um, is not done in a timely fashion, so if we would put more teeth into it, because we almost have the gauntlet now, so get these people on board and have them do their due diligence, and again, thank you all for coming.
Uh, thank you to everyone for coming out. I would like to again ask everyone to pray for Ms. Julia Jones, and she is the young lady that I was referencing to, that was struck by a vehicle on August the 30th, I think, yeah, on August the 30th. I'll just ask that we keep her, um, listed, um, that she may have a speedy recovery, um, from her injuries. Also, again, uh, thank you to the Panther, the ladies from the Panther Academy, um, again, continue to do great things, and great things will come to you. Um, also, thank you to Ms., Ms. Lynn. Thank you again. I'm gonna get with you, um, after this. Um, and then, I think, okay, so I don't know if a lot of people know that, but the city just opened a new event center, LC 278?
Community cultural center, which was not in use with actual members.
You're trying to move through rooms, and how many rooms is it, William?
Um, we have one, one main ballroom, and we have three prize rooms.
Okay.
So we, we have a capable of five.
Okay, and I know that, um, some of the people that were there, um, I think that they kinda heard about it last minute. Is there any way that we can start like sending out mass texts, kinda like how we did, like for the storm, or how?
We have a capability of them signing up to give these messages, and they have to sign up on the site, but it was posted on Facebook and.
Yeah, I was just saying, thinking of other, yeah, other ways that you could possibly.
We wanted to do a campaign to try to get more of the residents to sign up on our web page, so they can start getting this information sent to their email or their company.
Good, thank you so much. Um, other than that, if you don't have anyone that is registered to vote, please get them registered to vote, uh, and I think that is it. Y'all, stay safe, stay vigilant, and parents, check on your kids, talk to your kids, because we don't wanna see what is going on happening in our city or any other city. Have a good night.
I want to thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for the council meeting. I want to thank the nice young ladies for coming out, giving us a, a speech and all that good stuff. I want to congratulate, um, my man back there, who, um, I'm a good old country boy, so I probably mess your name up, I ain't gonna try, so, congratulations to you. And, um, I just got a few things. Uh, Mr. William, if you could check, um, Charles Street, let's see what's going on with the, um, the hole there, what's taking up?
The, the gas company just rerouted their lines, and now we're trying to get digging deep back to finish.
Okay, and then, um, 52 coming to Church Street, um, at the checkerboard tower there, 52 coming on to Church Street.
The rent, yeah.
Right there where that vape store is, I'm getting, a lot of people calling me saying them green LED, them green LEDs, when they turning, coming in, they say, you know, it's blending in with the road, and it's dark right there in that little area. See if we can get with them and do something about them LEDs on that building, if you don't mind, and that'll pretty much be it, and that's all I got.
What, what enforcement we have for that?
Okay.
I have a quick question. Is there any way, I know Church, and this is Ms. Willamino's district, and I am not trying to step over here, but please forgive me, but because of the darkness on that street, is there any way that we can, how, how can like light poles be put on Church Street down by the up club and, you know, um, DeGrave Street, to kinda lighten that area up?
We have addressed that with power company before.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we had a, a nice young lady come talk to us about that.
Where remarks were, the owners will have to put one there, because they have it based on what's required.
Got it, thank you.
If the owners put one there, then it would be on their bill, but they don't mind installing it for them.
So we could get lighting on Church Street, what you say?
Well, that Duke Power has already stated that they have adequate lighting based on the requirements. That could be a private individual's request, but I'll run that by them again and see what we can do.
So with the light poles that's already on Church Street?
If it's actually changed those lamps out, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll reach back out and see what we.
Did you want to add something to that, Ms. Reynolds?
Somebody looked back to see if I'm still there.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I got a, I got a, one more. Over there, Elizabeth Ann Court, right there, going into the Dallas Center, that light pole that been towed down right there for a good while, I think I mentioned it one time before, I see Duke got a flag there, but could you check and see what can we do to get that light, that little light replaced right there, in that little island?
What, what, what business?
Elizabeth Ann Court, in between First Choice and the Dolphins Office going to the Dallas Center at the back, on 52 there.
Off of 52.
Yeah, it's a little island right there, we got light poles in the middle, and I seen Duke come out there and put a, a flag down by this bit.
Maybe on private property, but I'll call, um, I'll contact over there and see what they say.
Okay, thank you. And, um, shout out Mr. Ricky and them, all the guys out there doing a good job. Shout out the Chief Miles and your guys for doing a good job, and that's all I got. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for your reports and your comments tonight. Thank everyone who's present for being out here to, um, tonight for our city council meeting. Thanks everyone who's viewing on Facebook or any other social media platform. Thanks again to our students. I really appreciate you coming out and speaking your voice. Um, thanks to Ms. Curcey, I know you're gonna do a wonderful job. Thanks to Ms. Michelle Daniels, I think she's already stepped out. Um, and thank everyone for coming up and, and speaking their public comment period time. Thanks to our city staff who worked so diligently with all our events, you have no idea what our staff do to put on these events, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Lynn Wilson, for coming out presenting, and Ms. Jolie Reynolds for coming out and presenting. But, um, our city staff, they, they go over and beyond, um, making sure that these events are, um, beneficial and, and exciting for our community, so I really do appreciate our staff. Um, we had a successful, since our last meeting, we had a successful H-Con on August 16th through 17th, and that was Mrs. Savon Whitehead. We also had our first Lake City Classic Golf Tournament hosted by the Lake City Recreation Department. Um, thanks to an amazing job of planning and implementing that by Deputy Director Grayson Boyton, Ms. Cynthia Mallett and the Recreation Department, and entire staff did an amazing job, so I thank everybody, and all the sponsorships and supports on that, too. Um, we had a presentation, um, recently for our EDA grant, which I think has been, I think, the largest grant that we've received here in the city of Lake City for 13.5 million dollars, um, awarded for our Ackline Street infrastructure, and we have flyers, information flyers back in the back to show you which streets that this will affect, and it would be streets such as Thomas Street, River Street, Wilcox Street, Florence, all of that will help with alleviate flooding. Uh, we are working diligently on other areas as well. If we can do the entire city in one project, we would, but we are working diligently to make sure that we, um, alleviate flooding through our, our city. Um, and we also had the pleasure to have our U.S. Deputy Secretary Graves to come and present that to us with Congressman Clyburn's office, so appreciate the staff again for, um, making sure that they were welcome as they, um, present that without, present that grant to us. Uh, we had our grand opening for our community center, LC 278. Um, thanks to everyone who came by to help celebrate that grand opening, um, and thanks to the staff again for their hard work. Um, please do go by, go out there and check it out, it's very, very beautiful. That is phase one. We will have phase two as we continue to give funding for that phase two, um, which is, we are a multi-purpose facility, but that community center is for everyone, just like its status, for the community. Um, thanks to GMK for making, making sure that they, um, made that, that building as beautiful as it is, so I appreciate all the hard work they put in as well. Since then, uh, we also received another grant, and we'll be putting out information about that, so this, this is what you're, you're reaping and seeing the works of your staff and, and the administration doing on a daily basis, making sure they making those connections with the right people and those, and those relationships, making sure that you're, we're applying and securing these grant, and going out for these grants and securing them, but we just received $176,000 grant for, um, it's called Safe Streets For All, so we're working on that, and we're working on more grants for our city to make sure that our city moves forward. our city to make sure that our city moves forward. We have flyers in the back of different events that's still gonna be continuing to go on for the rest of this year. We have Crossroads Music and Market, um, that is hosted by the Greater Lake City Chamber that's gonna be coming up on September twenty-first. We have, we're gonna have the rescheduling of our Gospel in Green, um, Gospel on the Green, so listen out for that as well. And just like Councilmember Cooper said, let's remember to register to vote and go out to vote, because Election Day will be coming soon. Tonight, a matter of fact, is our presidential debate, and I know everybody will be watching that pretty soon, shortly. Um, next Tuesday is September seventeenth, which is, which is National Voters Registration Date. So make sure that our young people, anyone else who has not registered to vote, please go out and register to vote, um, because your vote matters and we value your vote. Also, one last thing, the Florence County Council Meeting will be held on September nineteenth at the Bean Market at six P.M. They usually have it once a year at the Bean Market here in Lake City, and that will be, yes, at six P.M. So if you can attend, please come out then. County Council Meeting, September nineteenth at the Bean Market. Also, tomorrow, I think I stated it, but I know we posted it, we will have nine eleven, um, in remembrance of nine eleven on tomorrow, right here at the flagpole in front of the Police Department at ten A.M. Everyone is invited who would like to come out in remembrance. Ms. Donna?
Community cleanup?
Yes, community cleanup will be September eighteenth. Um, I think that's at twelve, let's say twelve, start one, for, one to three for cleanup. So please come out and help make your city beautiful from litter on September eighteen. Let's continue to pray for our city, state and nation. Please continue to pray for our young people, um, pray for our schools, pray for, um, all the ones that has been in these terrible accidents. Ms. Julia Jones, definitely please lift her and her family up in prayer. My prayers go out to these students who think they need to harm themselves or, or others. We definitely need to keep them, keep them in mind and keep them in our prayers. But also, that's pretty much all I have. I appreciate everything and everything you do for us all working together to keep Lake City moving forward. Lake City is a beautiful place, uh, we're doing some great things, and we're gonna keep moving forward no matter what. This is my hometown and I cherish it. Thanks everyone for coming, and I hope to see you next month. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.
Thank you.